At 7:50, 7:40, 7:50?
6:50.
6:50. 7:50 Eastern. Yep. You realize I got this far without a mistake? I just forgot about that mistake.
Really, wow.
Alright, so I'll call the in order, go call please.
Morris?
Here.
Larson?
Here, yes.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Eight present. This is the City of DeKalb, City Council Regular Meeting Executive Session of October 25th, 2021, in order to discuss the appro- The purchase or lease of real property is provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C5. And the appointment, discipline, performance, or removal of a public officer is provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C3. The following staff members are in attendance. City Manager Bill Nicholas, Assistant City Manager Josh Bolt, Executive Assistant Ruth Scott. Others in attendance are City Attorney John Donahue.
City Manager.
Want to start with the acquisition. So as we talked-
You don't want to end on that one, or?
What?
You don't want to end on that one?
As we discussed last time, related to our acquisition of Hunter Hill Crest is that threshold of assistance that would be good for relocation, and just in the time, the last two weeks. I'm finding that some, there are two tenants in particular who are looking at downtown properties and the price per square foot is about double what it is at some other place particularly, which you can look through the A.J. and that neighborhood. So, in the conversation that I've had with the owners of La Salsa, who have looked at the Lincoln and the couple of other places, let's keep that under wraps here. We could get the relocation, we could get one month's rent and probably not get a full second month's rent and no security deposit just to get in there. So, we're at 10, and I promise I won't keep coming back, but if we could get to 15, I think that makes, I can't think we'd get hung up after that. And that doesn't mean we give everybody 15, it just means that we could have up to that.
He just wants the freedom now.
I would, and if you're okay with that, then we don't take the vote.
I know, Morris.
We technically have that authority anyway, correct?
I do, well, but this is such a publicly visible-
Yeah, okay. What happened with the tenants?
To be honest, they, yeah. Are they ready to make a plunge, but they learned a little bit more about what happened to the previous owner, another Hispanic family that was basically similarly forced to leave. And so, after three, four months, and this is a family, and particularly a couple that are the head of the family, they've been running that for 14 years, and they want to put the roots down. This is a new place, this is what the kids grow into. They want to do some more, they're doing, they're experimenting with catering, there's not much room to do that where they are, and they could have done it in the basement and where they can still, and link it in, so they're excited. And I'd like to give them that encouragement if we could. The other one is the clothing store, although now he's gotten silent, so I don't know. They were looking at you all gone.
So they're renting, like, now?
Yeah, yeah, not buying.
I mean, the other positive to that is, especially because they want to put down roofs, because we know they've been successful, and maybe I don't need to convince you all, but because of that, they'd be a great addition to downtown to see, you know, to fill that space, you know, for the next 20 years, you know?
Really, I agree with you, it's not like we keep them operating, that's just great.
Right.
So is that consensus, we okay in the middle of that treaty?
Definitely, I'm not coming back.
Yeah, famous words.
Hey, Bill, what's going on with the grocery store over there?
He, they all, by the way, they all got their notices last week, so we closed on the property, we could go today. And then on, there was, you know, we're trying to get the addresses and things from Hunter on almost all day Tuesday, and then on Wednesday, the notices went out certified, and the owner, or the manager, not the owner, of the, of the, for the fresh market, Cleve, was not available to me on Thursday or Friday, but he's aware that I want to talk to him, and I didn't get out there today, did I? It's a crazy day, I'll get out there. And, you know, the 15,000 isn't going to move him one way or another, he's going to just have to make a decision. He knows he has to be out in six months, we can help him in that period of time, we can't help him afterwards. That's it.
Does he have any thought somewhere he's looking at moving in, or is he-
I think now he's going to get serious, I don't think he was taking, I think he was sort of denying it for a while, and now he knows, yes, I should say. And he's a pragmatic guy, from what I can tell, I don't know well, but he knows the place he's in wasn't his future, but it did, you know, he wasn't involved in the timing of all this, and it's been the city and Hunter and other things, so I think now he's aware.
So, if that's move in six months, can we waive their rent? Is, can we do that as part of their-
We could, right now I'm positioned, he still owe rent, because there's still costs involved, and then, for instance, we petitioned to have that property removed from the tax rolls for now, but it's still, tax, there's some proportion of program here, it's owed and the utilities and cleanup, you know, the street department's out there now, every day dumping the garbage, which is an improvement overall, but it's still not something they can do one once a day, it'll be still falling soon.
And liability too.
Liability, insurance is no small thing, and we're starting to get little, by the way, seven of the apartments upstairs have been boarded up, six of them have been condemned already, and prior to our closing, because of code enforcement issues, and downstairs two are gone now, and they're boarded up, so things are changing, and eventually people think, well, I probably have to start to go.
Is there one, like, scheduled now? Can we schedule it now?
What's that?
We did, I already scheduled the demo now.
Six months and one day?
We can't actually, it's April 10th, yeah, Manny.
It's already scheduled?
Well, that's it.
Oh, okay.
And Andy is working on getting proposals. It's a little bit far out, so as he gets a little closer to, say, December, then people can give a harder number, but it's something we plan to be ready to do.
And my intent is, so we get sledgehammers-
We were just going to say-
Is there a deal?
We're going to get the sledgehammers, we're going to get them branded for this page, just like a blue shovel for Facebook. We're not going to smash in windows and stuff, but we'll have some ceremonial thing, but I really want to make a statement that the city's out here actively involved, and we're doing something.
We'll get hard at you all if we-
I want to smash.
Yeah, I know you're very much.
We're on your brain.
Yes, we have her in the race. I'll learn, sorry.
I was going to just, it's a little tongue in cheek, but, you know, you know the firemen, they get, you know, they get the, to burn buildings down and stuff like that, I mean, maybe you could, maybe you could do it like a demo, where, you know, you get some of the local companies to come train their operators, and, you know, just let them have at it for a couple of weeks, and see if they can bring the building down.
I'm not even sure oxygen would protect them once properly there.
I know.
Thank you.
Awfully spongy in there.
Yes.
Second item is the performance of the city clerk. I don't come with animus, I just come, there are issues in the council, the wrestling with the, of the work on the minutes, and the, the number for the city clerk rolls to Ruth's office, so we know there's no participation in office hours.
I've never seen the city hall.
And so Ruth, every day checks it, and sometimes they're called, and it's always been one of the, not the only, but it's not the 2,000 number, it's one of those numbers that people could call, if they don't know city government, and they, the city push, so they call. So, we deal with that, and whatever the issues are, so that people don't wait for a week and say, nobody's called, we actually take care of that. A lot of the functions of the city clerk have been done, and have continued to be done, but it's got, but if they're, if the, if the council's content with the performance, fine. Now, obviously, we went through this, I don't want to go through what we did a year and a half ago, can't fire clerk, the functions have been defined now in ordinance. The one thing that is left, which is important to you, it's important to me too as a historian, and that's the quality of the recorded record. So, it is possible, and I defer to John on this, and we would talk to the state's attorney about this before we bring it to you as a possibility, and that is to just, you have the authority, I'm told by John and by Matt, to assign somebody, it could be Ruth, as the recording secretary. Now, it doesn't mean that you've taken the duties away from the clerk, it just means now you have, in a way, you have, you have a dual recording, and the clerk still takes the seat, calls and rolls and so forth, but if you want minutes done sharply, quality, there's your, there's your person. And you can just, when it comes time to accept the minutes when they're done, you could, you have a choice, and instead of beating this like we have been for a couple of months now, you can just decide that there's one set of minutes that I think you prefer, that's what we're going to do. That's easy enough to do, that's one alternative, there are many other alternatives here, so I defer to you for conversation on this, but, and then here's another thing. The city hall is just fine in its size, but that room, I am eyeing, because when the, when we have the auditors here, they don't have a, they take up our conference room, and that is right in the middle of things, that would be great to use. It's not much of an office to begin, it's still pretty good for just, you know, for a work area. If it's not going to be used, and it hasn't been since the first week, I'd like to give them some notice and say, you know, how can you use it? We have other uses for it. He likes to work at home, I think he's using his laptop, so.
There's precedence for this, because if anyone's been in city hall and seen the mayor's office, got this huge desk, tables, oh, that's right, no, we got it, the whole thing made it a conference room, so there is no mayor's office at city hall. I mean, it's a small place, so I thought it was crazy to have an office there, so we removed it, and I just use the conference table and meetings there. So there's already precedence from me sitting in, and I see no problem again, and like I said, every time I go to city hall, I walk in the front door, because I'm all looking and seeing, and for five and a half months I've been walking in there, I've never once seen Sasha come into the office.
And we have our recent victory in the appellate court, thanks to Mr. Frazekis about allowing us to essentially have another person duplicating the duties of clerk and supporting that as well.
Meetings are recorded, correct? The audio's clear on meetings, so what's been the trouble with the minutes? I think just the time issue for him, should we talk with him about it?
Well, I have, but my first one.
No, not also.
So, even the discussion we just had tonight, because I told him I wasn't going to allow him in this closed session, because we're going to talk about him, he reminded me that he had asked us for training, and I told him, I'm like, training's not going to teach you how to spell the proper name with a capital letter, training's not going to teach you where to have a comma and a period. He spelled his name wrong in the minutes, right? I mean, training's not going to teach you any of that. I honestly don't understand, it's almost like he-
I don't think he's trying to drive such a-
Correct, yes.
Which, which he has a lot of history of doing, yes.
Has he commented on inability of time to remove certain tasks?
He commented before when he had his summer job, and he missed all those meetings, and didn't do anything. He commented, remember, he came back and said, I am reaffirming myself, I will commit to this, I can do it.
I am all done by corn crust.
Right, that was the following weekend, probably the end of August.
And he hasn't fulfilled it, so, so for the reason I close that question is, I think if there's, if he's made commitments, and has commented that he's unable to fulfill responsibilities, then I think it's reasonable to pull some of those tasks, to get the tasks completed in a timely fashion. And I think that also starts to put on a path of demonstrating a better pattern. Yes, and I think the pattern is important, as we consider where we are with the position today, and where we want to be with the position.
Ms. Regent? One last question.
Have we asked him if there's any sort of disability or accommodation that he needs? As, as I'm considering the deliberateness, of the potential deliberateness of this, and it's good to know that we already addressed this importance, that we have, like, we can do this duplication thing, and I think that's a prudent and wise course to take, to duplicate efforts like that, and then I think what we'll run into is that the community identifies that there's some misappropriated funds perhaps, supporting the clerk's office, if there's going to be this duplication. Not that that's the ideal course, but that the community should at some point recognize that something is amiss here, and something ought to be done, and when that public sentiment drives in that direction, then we can follow their lead.
Well, if you looked at the minutes where he was very passionate about the topic, they were combined, they were like word for word what was said, so it's not like he has maybe issues of doing it, or whatever, he wants to do it, they're there, the rest of the time, if he's not involved, we get resolution number and nothing after that. I mean, it was glaring, the difference.
Even the minutes before that meeting, he put in bold his comments, started all the comment, and then gave one sentence, Mr. Brown, he used a period, Mr. Brown, I mean, which made us, Mr. Brown commented that the review board should have trust. That was it, we all heard Ernold talk, Ernold didn't say anything in one sentence, but he summarized, right? He summarized his, but then did someone else that spoke next, so, yeah, I'm hard pressed to think there's a disability here, I think it's just a simple lack of desire.
We can't have that, that balance be so skewed like that, so.
Whether or not there is a disability, if he suggests there is, and we don't ask if he needs reasonable accommodations, then we become liable, I believe, so I just want to make sure we check that.
Wouldn't he ask if he is, I mean, we're city government.
I think it's our responsibility to be-
Maybe not for a moment.
I'm just worried he's gonna-
You might. Sure, you may, you may, but that's our due diligence, that we have to do to check everybody's to not end up in a lawsuit on that topic specifically.
Is there a threat of a lawsuit?
Not really, I think, under ADA, he generally would have the obligation to tell us he needs accommodation. Obviously, there's obvious situations where someone, you see someone every day limping around, limping around, and they can't do stairs or something like that, that's the obvious thing that everybody knows about, but things that are not that obvious, I think it's, the obligation is on him to tell us he needs an accommodation. At that point, he also has an obligation to then engage in an interactive discussion with us as to what that reasonable accommodation could be. We don't have to give him necessarily the accommodation he wants, sometimes people ask for certain things, but it can be done much differently, and much less burden to a lawyer a different way, it's up, then, through gauging in that, that conversation, we, at that point, we determine reasonable accommodation. Oftentimes, that's where it goes astray, is the person just, if they know they're not going to get the accommodation that they want, and you're trying to give them something else, and you're opening the doors, you keep after them, and trying to talk to them, and they ignore you, oftentimes, that's where they fall off and they lose their claim.
And Ruth, in the beginning, reached out, asked assistance, and was turned out. So even assistance, and now he won't, he's giving to her and saying, hey, can you prove this? It's like, well, then she should just do it, because Ruth's not gonna, she's going to do it correctly. Go ahead.
I made the wrong column, we keep the audio portion.
Well, it turns out what meetings you're talking about, we have an obligation to keep the closed session minutes, the verbatim tape, for at least 18 months, and then we have to approve the minutes, and then we can authorize them to be destroyed. I like to go even two years, just because of statute of limitations.
But how about open session?
Open session, it's, we don't need to keep them at all.
Well, see, that's where I'm concerned, that our open session meetings, which are our only true document without the minutes, accurately approved, that we should make sure that we've got those, I mean, that's my course of concern.
Well, this is the official record, to your point, like the video recordings, but you remember Google Plus, Google just decided, they're done, so Google could decide that they won't, I know, but they're done with YouTube, or they won't carry city government or whatever, and they're all gone now, go ahead.
Most of our history we've had, Deputy City Clerk. Correct. So, can Mayor Barnes just reappoint Ruth as Deputy City Clerk, and we move on?
So she has the same, she has like parallel powers now, except for that one thing, which is taking the minutes, and that would be what the recording secretary, so, it is maybe, split a hair, so you're calling that person recording, then we don't get back into the clerk, Deputy Clerk, who's got the authority, the state statute is a little mushy about who can appoint, remember, we had that issue a couple of years ago, I thought I could appoint a deputy, and, you know, so, so you can create any position you want, just say this has authority to do that, as long as you don't take away what the state statute says a clerk's authorities.
And I mean, just, I want to be clear, what your brain before us is having Ruth actually just create the minutes, and then at city council, Sasha may or may not submit some, because we don't know, like, we still have the August 23rd minutes too, so, there's a meeting in August, Adam knows what happened there. Ruth will produce some, Sasha will produce some, they'll both be coming for council, and we can choose which one we want to accept, that's what you're-
Until, unless you get tired of that, and you just say, you know, I think we're going to use the recording secretary or the clerk, although I put my money the other way.
Well, I was going to say, the importance of having good minutes is, you might, very well, in, in a year from now, want to go back and look at the Fara agreement, and you might want to see what comments were made, or how, you know, somebody voted this way, or somebody would challenge you, that you did not support X, Y, Z, you need to go back and look at the minutes.
You see, you did have video, you could, but you-
It may or may not be on YouTube, and number one, how do you know, well, I guess, so, you first have to search through the city's website, find the agenda, the name of the YouTube.
I don't know how far this back YouTube channel has all our meetings there, so, you know, and the example I have is a Tiff deal, we don't, the levels-
No, but I mean, it's like the meeting, it's in the council.
Then all the background materials there, yeah, besides, this is, we've had a great, like I said, a great standard of transparency, well documented minutes, all the background information in there, all I's, all T's crossed, that's the standard, and we had a terminal of city clerk Frazekis, because we still got good minutes, overall, and I'm looking, Ruth does them, we've had good minutes, so, that's all we're asking, is, I mean, if there's one job, you pay $8,000 a year to literally come to a meeting and take some decent minutes, so, all in purpose.
Are we, are we opening a can of worms, if we've got two sets of minutes, and we have to choose which one we're going to approve?
Well, the only minutes are the ones you approve.
Yeah.
It only actually come your minutes until you approve them.
But I guess, and I'm wondering, in the community, to what extent we open a can of worms, we've got minutes that are produced by the elected city clerk, and minutes that are produced by, by an employee, and then we're determining each night which minutes we want to, to accept?
The question that, is the clarification is, we've got minutes we can't accept now.
Right.
So, and I think the community, especially in light of everything going on right now, would understand the dilemma, and how to think where the people would want us to have.
I mean, they are your minutes, and you're ultimately responsible for them, and the Open Meetings Act applies to you, and you're supposed to do it within 30 days, or, or by the second meeting, after the, after the meeting.
Right, so we're out of compliance.
Or what?
So that's, that's my-
Someone complains, and the PAC will ask a letter, we'll say, yeah, the clerk's done a bad job, and we'll get a letter saying, go do it again. It's, no one, nothing really bad's going to happen, but it's still, it's, but people don't know, know better, the attorney general is-
It's a bit, it's a bit rhetorical, because, you know, we've got compliance issue, technically, that we've stepped around for months with, with, where we're saying, well, you know, so I guess, are we, by, and by duplicating the minutes, are we addressing the core issue?
We're not, but the reason that we're going this course is because we had so much drama surrounding last time, and that it looked so bad in the community and the papers, so by doing this, I think the positive side of doing this is that we draw attention to the failures of the clerk, we acknowledge the failures of the clerk, and we come up with a solution that solves the failures of the clerk without harming the elected office, and then I think we leave it in the community's hands to say, we don't like this.
And I get all that, and I heard all, I paid attention to the, all the rest of the stuff, what was going on, but I guess, but I just wonder here, how effectively are we drawing attention to it?
Trust me, the minute we start doing that, everybody's going to be like, oh, I can't believe it, this is a-
I'm trying to listen, I'm kind of feeling like we're doing too little, because it's gone on for, for weeks and months, and even, even here, I wonder to what degree any of this is going to be drawing attention, and is going to be making it into the public eye, so the public is really aware of the magnitude of what's going on here.
You need to listen to my radio show, WLPK, and TV, right?
Yep.
Okay, listen to that, and that's what triggered the whole paper article before, they called him out for calling cops or masters, this is mainstream through Kalb, all right?
Okay, all right.
But it's out there, and I'm very vocal about it, to the tune of, you know, starting to talk about, well, what is a recall, and that's not in our ordinance, we've changed our ordinance, blah, blah, but, but letting the public know this is in your court, and those of us, you know, city manager Nicholas gets it, I get it, constant, man, constant, phone calls, emails, what the hell's going on, what are you doing with your administration? I mean, even today, I've probably had three or four, I've heard his last outburst online.
But, but, how many, how many different speakers were messaging that? You know, because, I pay attention, but I don't, I don't listen to WLPK, but, and every, the Chronicle, and the Chronicle's not much, much better than A.J. Young's, but-
But Greg, to your point, this is what it's going to look like, posters, you know? Good minutes, the bad minutes, let's, let everybody compare themselves, and they're going to be in every meeting we have, I mean, so it's going to be, the bad and the good are going to show up in every-
So, so, so that's a good point, that's a great messaging, that's right there.
There you go, the good and the bad.
All in the book, sir.
All right. Can we dock the pay of the clerk? I know that the salary is sketch and all, but-
Can't do it, yeah. Can't do it.
All in favor?
So, my guess, two things, one is, my guess is when you're, when you're good and bad, I think, I think he's not even going to take this, I don't think there's a difference. No, even me, the other, I think, this is my little bit of reading the Illinois State Code, so it's about-
Why we have city attorney?
I honestly, I think he could be removed from office for erudition duty, but I don't, and I think if it was challenged, I don't think the state's attorney would allow.
The real issue is abandonment of office, not showing up for the summer, and if his job he's doing is so bad, it's essentially like you're not showing up, I mean, that involves a, you know-
But I don't know that there's appetite for-
No, that involves a hearing.
And that's, it's either, it's either this, it's like two extremes, you do this, or you do that, and that's not-
He wants you to make a big deal of it as much as possible, that's what he wants, is.
City Manager.
Should mention that we did pursue this with the state's attorney last week, just to see what his appetite might be, and he said, you know, I don't want to go back over what we did before, you're absolutely right, but he did say, as John was suggesting, that if he seems to have abandoned, he said, I would have an interest in that part, and he said, here are the things that are before, and you just cited that he did show up, and now he is showing up, but then if the quality of minutes, which is all that he's obliged to do, is, is not, and he's smart enough not to know that it's not representing the work of the council, or any of the things that should be memorialized in minutes, then that would be another, and that's just a little vague, but he said he would look at that too, and we do have, you know, you've got August 13th, that's two months ago, that we're still fighting over that, we can sit tonight, so, one thing you could do is simply appoint Ruth your recording secretary at the next meeting. at the next meeting. I mean, could the mayor just do that at the top of the meeting?
Uh, probably should do it, put in the ordinance.
Okay.
Probably be the best way to do it.
Well, you'd have to figure out how that goes. But, and then we could explain to the public what this means. And then for a while, you could, maybe one, only one meeting. But you'd have to put Tracy Show, you've got this and this, you know, after the first, she's appointed. And then the next regular meeting, you got this set of minutes and this set of minutes. You look at it and you decide, to your point, Greg. Let's just cut bait here. It's gonna be this and go for a while. We'll review this in three months, six months, whatever, and see how it goes.
One question. I'm gonna ask, John, in Ruth's absence, if we go down this path, what happens in Ruth's absence? I know she'd love to take a vacation. And the second thing is, closed session minutes. Is there any conflict? We can have whatever we want.
I've done one of the closed session minutes before.
You did a terrible job. You did not.
He's been saying that I was not terrible.
No, wait, I'm all serious. Since I'm concerned if we're going to go down this path, shouldn't we have, well, a backup? I mean, what is our, Ruth, you would, I know you've gone on vacation.
He doesn't go very well.
I know.
We can, we can address that.
Right. Okay. But just throw it out there.
I think, no, Mr. Alderman. Yes. Oh, Alderman Adams, yes.
Yes. So I wanna go back to, being an anarchist is not a disability. And being someone who is trying to cause problems for drama is not gonna go away with these minor actions. We're gonna have, can we have a censure? Can we draw up a, like an ordinance that gives us the opportunity to censure, just a formal censure for behaviors that we don't like? I know we talked about it previously for Alderman. We're all, we're like, why don't we have something that the court can vote on if we're gonna censure behavior? And we can just continue to censure the behavior and draw... I know we wanna avoid the public relations fiasco, but I don't think we're gonna get away with it because I think he's here to stay. And I think the weaker we... Well, right. But the weaker we look, the more emboldened he'll become. And so I could just see two years of being like one big drama.
Well, my caution to that is if being elected the city clerk does not mean he loses his First Amendment rights.
True.
So when you get all that stuff tied together, it could create the look like you're doing this to me because you don't like my opinions. And I have a First Amendment rights to my opinion. So if we're gonna do this, make your recording secretary, you're probably better off just not be on record and just leave that alone. And you just have, and, you know, what the courts always say is the best answer to speech is more speech. And maybe it's appropriate comments from the council during a meeting saying, like to say, I saw this and we're totally against this. We think this is totally, or things like that. Difference is expressing your opinion is support whatever it is that's contrary to what he's putting out there.
Well, I think the actions that we're doing right now, the actions because of what he is doing, is gonna build the case for next steps.
Yeah.
But we need to, we need to go through the process.
Does some agree with his anarchist goals and agenda? The more attention we give to this, the more we reward him for this behavior. But the other thing I was thinking, and, you know, you guys give me your, I'd love to hear your feedback on this, with the duplicate minutes. I was thinking at first, you know, when you guys mentioned getting rid of the duplicate, like showing duplicate minutes in the agendas, I was thinking that the value of having them both there consistently moving forward may demonstrate if he does choose to no longer submit them. You know, we'll have, you know, we can record that every time that we show what we are submitting and what our appointed person is submitting. And I think it's important to continuously document that, whatever it is that he's submitting.
Fine.
So then to clarify with the process then, so what happened? Well, our meeting today, right? And the meeting minutes will then be published at the next meeting, right? All sets. Or rather, we're gonna approve a set at the next meeting.
All sets will be on the agenda.
But if, but if he doesn't publish one, then we approve what we have. And then the absence of his minutes really starts to point out the pattern. Because the issue is, is that we've had weeks and weeks without any, right?
How about this? So we could do that. Although Ruth, as of the next meeting, the opening of the next meeting will not be officially the recording secretary. You could look at it and let's assume, and I think this is a safe assumption, that you'll have two remarkably different sets of minutes. You could say, I think the executive secretary, the executive assistant, excuse me, has, has a very responsible set of minutes here. I believe that we should appoint her recording secretary for now. And we'll continue to receive and file, or maybe not file, but receive the minutes of the city clerk. And if the council wishes to reconsider this position, we can do so in another six months or something like that. How's that?
Mm-hmm. Perfect. And maybe he'll reform. And we'll have a great city clerk on our hands.
And John, rather than change the ordinance, can, I mean, the councilman just say, as the executive assistant, you are our recording secretary. It's memorialized in the minutes, which Ruth memorialized.
Okay. I mean, if you don't wanna do that, I think I can, I'd support that.
Rather than going through three readings and going through that whole thing?
Especially the budget type. I read it's gonna really...
And we have a living estimate.
All members.
Then if we count the recording secretary, then is the clerk needed at all ever in executive session?
That's up to you.
My preference would be no, based on the public behavior of what I did with this personally and what I've heard in the community. I've got some real reservations with confidentiality and other expectations for what is being discussed in closed session. And yes, this closed session recording will be released and much like last time when we discussed the clerk, that was released. And again, everyone has an opinion and a commentary, but no different this time than last time. It's subordination of the city clerk, period.
You wanna talk?
No.
Okay.
I think we're on the same page.
Yeah. Can you, can you say again what we decide?
We go into the next meeting. And Ruth, are you agreeable to this?
Yes, sir.
We're talking about it.
Thank you, Ruth.
To ask you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point. We've been assuming. I just know you and I know you really wanna have good minutes. But yeah, we should make sure it's okay with you.
Yes, thank you.
And Ruth's behalf, she's very conscious of the importance of these things. Anyway, so I think what I'm hearing is that Ruth produces the minutes in a timely fashion to you that get on the agenda. If we get minutes from the city clerk, we'll put on the agenda too. You get copies of both, anything we get, I'm holding anything back. You get copies of both that you're, well, you'll get them sent to you if you have both sets. And then one of you, when it comes time to consent agenda, you can just say, I feel that the minutes of the...
Let them be careful on the documents to distinguish whose belongs to whom. And also on the motion, make sure, approve the minutes of the recording, something like that.